The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the city council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the “I do not wish to speak” option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don’t appear on tonight’s formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it’s time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You’ll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube, and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight’s meeting.
I’d like to call to order the regular meeting on December 2nd, 2019. Please join Councilmember Campbell on the Pledge Allegiance and Invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head as we pray. Our Heavenly Father, we are so thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, for its opportunities, and for its challenges. We pray for strength and guidance for each day, as it comes, for each day’s duties and for each day’s problems. As we gather here tonight, we pray that we are ever mindful of the responsibilities we have to our fellow citizens as we deliberate the business before us this evening. We pray for protection for our military, for our police, for our firefighters, and for their families. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us each day. Amen.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Campbell, for the prayer this evening. We have one communication item tonight. This is a happy one, kind of a sad one. So, the first item is to recognize Ruben Vallosa retirement, and of course, we have Javier Sobic to present that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You are right, it’s a little bit of a sad moment today. We typically identify these moments as bittersweet, but it’s really, there’s nothing bitter about this. It’s really a sweet moment to see someone who has done so much for this city have the opportunity of move on to the next step in his life. Ruben, we had a celebration for Ruben this morning in Public Works, and it is just obvious the impact that he has had in this organization. As you see back there, a lot of his staff are here this evening, wishing him well. And again, this organization has benefited immensely by having him. I’ve been in the city for a little bit over four years, and I recall when I told others that I was coming to Goodyear to share with me, “Oh, you’re going to be working with Ruben.” And in fact, later on, as I’ve been to a couple of conferences or so on, I’ve identified myself being in Goodyear, and more than a few times, I’ve heard, “Oh, you work with Ruben.” I said, “Okay, that’s enough.” But, you know, again, what can we say other than wishing him well? And we want to give Ruben a small token to remember us, because we will definitely remember him. Ruben, congratulations.
Thank you. Well, Javier, thank you very much for this recognition award. It has been an honor for me and a privilege to receive this recognition tonight. Working and serving this, my own community, my own city, has been a very rewarding experience for me, in a professional and a personal level. But first and foremost, I would like to thank the Lord for allowing me to endure, for giving me the resiliency and the strength to successfully finish and close this phase in my professional life. I would like to thank my wife, my family, for their support and encouragement, encouragement to be positive and move forward even when difficult times came. I would like to thank you, the city, city council, city management, and perhaps my frontline staff, for working and believing in me all these years. Their trust and support has encouraged me and have been a key factor to my success. Thank you very much.
Please stay right there for a moment, because I know council is going to want to say something. So I’m going to start with Councilman Pizzillo.
Ruben, I remember all the way back in 1997, when I was working in the city manager’s office, and we used to work together on that. And again, I wish you well in your next phase, but I would say, to go on the record, he’s one of the nicest guys you’ll ever want to meet, true to what he just said. Always delivered what he said he was going to deliver, and I really appreciated it back in those days, Ruben. So, I wish you well in your retirement. Hopefully, you’ll pick out something, because I know you’re a busy kind of guy, and you’ll find something to kind of keep you occupied. But again, thank you for all your years of service with Goodyear, and great job.
Vice Mayor Stip.
Thank you. I guess in true seniority order...
Yes, yes.
I think Ruben and I sat on one of the city’s first safety committees together at Public Works. And it’s just, everything, every day that goes by is always a thrill, and I said to Ruben before, it’s not only his retirement, but then you look at everybody who came here tonight to support Ruben, and that really tells a lot about his character. So, I wish you well, obviously with your family here tonight. Go out and enjoy where the wind blows you.
I will.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
Well, Ruben, we hate to say goodbye, because we hate for people like you to retire and leave us, because you’ve been so instrumental in our history and the service that you’ve given to our city. But we want to thank you for all that you’ve done. Thank your family, because I know how much they have supported you, and I hope you didn’t have to go out too many long hours at night or something awful like that. But we wish you well. We hope you enjoy your retirement, and don’t be a stranger. You know where we are, so we’d like you to come by and say hello to us time to time.
Very good, thank you.
Councilmember Laura Tano.
Thank you so much for all your dedication to the citizens of Goodyear. You are a true public servant, and we thank you for all the time that you’ve taken and given and devoted to our city as we’ve grown, and so that is a true, true measure of what a great person you are. And it’s a great loss to the city, but I’m sure your family and you are going to have many new goals and a wonderful, blessed 2020. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Javier, have you thought about, you’re losing your corporate memory here?
What’s that?
You’re losing the corporate memory here. He’s been here so long, and I expected you to say one sentence, how different this is when you first were hired. What is the biggest change for you?
Well, when I started, the city population was probably about five, four, five thousand. And now, it’s in the thousands. I don’t even know how many thousands, but that’s been a huge, huge change, and I have experienced, you know, the growth, but I have enjoyed every bit of it through all the years.
Well, we thank you for all your patience and work, and congratulate you, because out of everybody, you’ve had to make a lot of changes, in the department, with employees, everything about it. So, you’ve really grown, and it’s time for, like your wife says, she’s traveling. I did mention to her she might want a room in the house where she can get away from you, and you can get away... But I’ve been retired with my husband for a while, so, but she said, “No, no.” So she has a great attitude, so just enjoy your retirement. Let’s give him a round of applause. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the council. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Does anybody want to speak that’s in the audience this evening? All right, then let’s go on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items two through eight by title only, please?
Number two, approval of minutes. Number three, accept the federal fiscal year FFY 2019 Homeland Security Grant Program Award for the Goodyear Fire Department Project titled Goodyear Fire Threat Identification and Venue Protection Enhancement. Number four, accept the federal fiscal year FFY 2019 Homeland Security Grant Program Award for the Urban Area Security Initiative for the Goodyear Fire Department Project titled Goodyear Hazmat Technician Training and Team Enhancement. Number five, approve the expenditure authority for the well number 26 in raw water transmission line. Number six, number one, adopt resolution number 2019-2012 declaring as a public record
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
that certain document entitled Amendment to Goodyear City Code Chapter 17 Cable Communications
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right.
filed with the city clerk.
There’s one public hearing tonight on the agenda. The public hearing is to consider the CDBG application for FY 2020-2021.
Two, adopt ordinance number 2019-1458 amending Goodyear City Code Chapter 17 Cable Communications,
I’m opening the public hearing. We have one of our favorite speakers, Katie, welcome, planning manager.
providing for repeal, providing for applicability, providing for corrections, perseverance, and
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
an effective date. Number seven, adopt resolution number 2019-2014 authorizing the city manager or her designee
As stated, this is the required public hearing for the CDBG grant applications, and this
to execute the license agreement between the City of Goodyear and Level 3 Communications LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, providing for the city manager or her designee
is a continuation of our discussion from the November 4th work session we had on this
to execute amendments to the license agreement associated with minor Scrivener errors and
As we stated, discussed at that work session, council did give us guidance to move forward
to enter into separate agreements for in-kind exchanges of fiber conduit and/or joint trenching for the city’s use.
with presenting these two grant applications, the first priority being the lighting project
Number eight, adopt resolution number 2019-2015 authorizing the city manager or her designee
in North Subdivisions, the second being the pool conversion at the Loma Linda Pool.
to execute the license agreement between the City of Goodyear and MCI Metro Access Transmission Service Corp., doing business as Verizon Access Transmission Services, providing
So, starting with the lighting in North Subdivision project, just a reminder of the North Subdivision
for the city manager or her designee to execute amendments to the license agreement associated
neighborhood, which on this map is roughly outlined in red, it includes 280 homes.
with minor Scrivener errors and to enter into separate agreements for in-kind exchanges
The, you can see a couple of the photographs we’ve taken of the current conditions at
of fiber conduit and/or joint trenching for the city’s use.
Thank you. Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
night, their current halogen lighting, and the spacing does not meet current city standards.
Then I need a motion in a second to approve items two through eight. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second.
I’ve heard a motion from Councilman Hampton, and a second from Vice Mayor Stip.
This, the proposal we brought to you at work session was very similar to what we did at
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Canada Village, which was replacing light fixtures at the current pole locations.
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
However, at the work session, council brought up a concern from residents that they wanted to add additional lighting. So we did go ahead and relook at this project and created some additional new options and cost estimates for this project, which I’ll present to you. I will go over the costs in a moment. I wanted to start with just the project scopes. So the first option would be an approved lighting option, which would be those 52 existing lights, replacing the existing halogen lighting with LED street lighting. And again, this is similar to what we did in Canada Village a couple years ago with CDBG funds. There is a pedestrian pathway that runs through North Subdivision, I mean, through North Subdivision, and it is not lit by the existing street lighting, nor if we added street lighting, it wouldn’t be lit by that lighting either. So we went ahead and looked at the cost for adding 16 bollard pedestrian lights to that pathway, and we’d have to use those bollard lights, because there are homes adjacent to this, and so the tall street lights wouldn’t be appropriate along this pathway. Then we looked at the enhanced lighting option, and that would be adding 44 new streetlights, poles, equipment, and lighting, and that would bring the neighborhood up to current lighting standards. So again, this is a map of the neighborhood. The blue dots are the existing lighting, so that improved lighting option would be just those existing light locations, adding the new LED fixtures. The blue line is where that pedestrian path is, and so that’s where those 16 bollards could go in the walkway lighting option. And then if we did the enhanced lighting option, that would be adding 44 new streetlights, so the existing streetlight locations wouldn’t be as they are, and so we would end up with 96 total streetlights with that project. So, here’s a couple photographs. You can see the current lights are these carriage-style lighting, and the light source is at the bottom, and it points up, and then the light bounces back down, and that’s another reason why it’s so dim, is the light isn’t directly pointed down. So, the LED lighting is not only brighter, but it also is going to be directed, it can be directed much easier than those old halogen lights. So again, we expect it to be much brighter. When we did the project in Canada Village, just replacing the poles at the existing locations, we heard a very good response from that neighborhood. They were very happy with the increased lighting. And then this is an example of the bollard lighting that could go at the walkways. This isn’t the exact design, we just wanted to show an example of what that bollard lighting could look like. So looking at project costs, and these figures that I’m providing are estimates, and they’re also not the total project cost, this is what the grant request would be. I wanted to note that we will be putting in a supplemental for design of the project with this year’s supplemental. The CDBG funds, we won’t get those until late fall 2020, so by doing a supplemental for design, that will, one, count as match, so it improves our grant application, it’ll also allow us to get the project moving ahead of the federal fiscal year, so that once we got those federal funds, we could hopefully just start in construction and get the project done. We do also have $160,000 for this project already in the CIP. So again, the improved lighting would be a $200,000 grant request. If we wanted to add in the walkway lighting, it would be $275,000, and doing the whole entire project, the grant request would be around $575,000. Now, just to note, we don’t anticipate getting $575,000, just based on past performance and the grants the committee gives out. We would expect to get around the $275,000 mark. And so if we were to get that money, at that point, we would need to have council decision on, would we want to supplement the project with additional funds to do that enhanced lighting, or would we be okay with the improved lighting scenario? The minimum request that we’re going to indicate on the grant application would be $115,000. That, plus the 160 in the CIP, would take us to that improved plus walkway option. The next project is the baby pool conversion at Loma Linda Pool. This is going to remove and backfill the existing baby pool, and then in its place, install a splash pad, play equipment, and shade coverings. In the CIP, the project budget is $495,000. The grant request we’re proposing is $444,000, $440,000, and that would be a city match of $80,000. Again, it, a match is not required by CDBG, but it does increase our chances of getting grant funding, and since this project is budgeted in the CIP, we went ahead and included a city match to increase our chances of getting funded. Now, I understand 440 plus 80 doesn’t equal the 495, but if we use federal grant funds, we will have increased project costs because of Davis Bacon wages, so that’s why there’s a cost difference between that city match and grant request and the current project total. And then the minimum funding request for this project, we will indicate $130,000 or about 30% of project costs. So to summarize, we’re requesting that council authorize staff to submit these two CDBG applications, priority one being streetlights, priority two being the pool conversion. The resolution also authorizes the city manager to execute any related documents if we were to receive the grant, including the IGA with the county and any necessary budget transfers. That concludes my presentation. I’d be happy to take any questions you might have.
We appreciate those, the details you gave us this same evening. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Anybody in the audience want to speak? All right, then I’m going to close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2019-2004 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2019-2004 authorizing the submission of two applications for fiscal year 2020-2021 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program Funds to the Maricopa County Human Services Department, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents relating to said applications, and authorizing the city manager to approve required budget transfers if awarded.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution 2019-2004? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton, and a second by Councilman Campbell. Open for council discussion? Yes, Councilman Campbell.
Katie, will you go back to your priority one for the streetlights for me? All right, so you’re going to put in the request to CDBG funds for $200,000. Is that correct?
Thank you. We will put in the grant request for the full project, for the $575,000.
That’s all I needed to know. I wanted to be sure you wanted to do that, because actually, Katie, even if they only give us $250,000 or $300,000, it’s our turn to get a grant now. We haven’t had it in many years, and we could always go back the next round as well for the balance of that, to finish those lights. I know a lot of other cities do the same thing. When I was sitting on CDBG, they would do that, and they would just revisit it again to, if we could do as much as we could with what they give us, and then go for the rest of it, that might work as well. I don’t know that we won’t, we won’t get both of these, I know. So it’ll be up to the committee to decide which is more important for the health and safety of the residents. I just want us to be sure that we, I just, yeah, I just think it’s, this particular neighborhood has been, we haven’t spent a lot of money on this neighborhood. In the nine years I’ve been on council, we’ve done the one bumps in the road, and I think that they’re, they need to do it, at least through the walkway. That walkway is so unsafe, and there are people that walk in it at nighttime, and it’s really dangerous. So I just want to make sure we put in for the full amount for both grants, and then see, see what the committee does. Depends on how we present it, too.
Thank you. If I can, if you don’t mind me just adding to that, I just got a note that we are going to put the project in the CIP regardless of the grant funding, so if we don’t have the grant funding, we’ll have it in the CIP.
Okay, thanks.
I’m sorry for interrupting Councilman Laura Tano.
Oh, well, thank you. That was actually going to be my question, so you answered it, you just had of the thing, because I agree with Councilmember Campbell that, I love the walkway lighting, I think that’s a great feature. I’ve seen that at other places, and it seems to actually make a lot of light for, you know, and I didn’t realize how dark, you look at those pictures, like, that’s awful dark. So I thank you for putting that in there, so you’ve already got my question.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I also agree. I know this, I’m on the board for CDAC, so I definitely agree. I think this will be a great thing, and I’m hoping that, hoping that it goes through. So we’ll try. I can’t necessarily vote for it, but I can hopefully influence the rest of the people on there to hopefully vote for it. But, yeah, looking for, I think it’d be great for that community if we can get it, and also for the baby pool conversion would be great as well, so we’ll see how it works out. So thank you.
Well, I can say, as a victim of having a recent fall, and light was one of the purposes, I can tell you 100%, and if she didn’t answer that, I was going to say, “We’re going to go for this.”
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right, so, that’s how I’m feeling at the moment. So, any other discussion? All right, let’s vote on this. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, let’s go on to business, and I’d like to remind council to wait for the motion in a second before discussion. The first item visits to consider approving the amendments to the Goodyear Commission bylaws. John Ryder, Assistant to the Council, will be present. He will be joined by Gabby Burton, the Chair, and Madison C., the Vice Chair of the Youth Commission. Good evening, ladies, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. The reason I’m here is that we are requesting approval for changes to the Goodyear Youth Commission bylaws. The amendments to the bylaws are subject to ratification by the city council. They are necessary for three reasons. First, in July, the council approved an ordinance which clarified several areas of the Youth Commission City Code, including new language regarding the number of members, and increased the terms from one year to two year. Corresponding amendments are being recommended to the bylaws to align to the changes in city code. Second, during the FY 20 budget process, the council approved funding to send a youth commission delegation to Washington, DC for the NLC Congressional Conference. The bylaws did not contemplate out-of-state travel. In consultation with my counterparts in Buckeye, Avondale, and Surprise, staff drafted additions to the bylaws pertaining to travel to do the following. First, reinforced that commissioners are still bound by all ethical standards for behavior and decision-making while on travel status. Also outlined information regarding travel costs, and created a procedure for selecting commissioners for travel opportunities. In particular, preference for travel opportunities will be given to the chairperson, vice chairperson, and upperclassmen with a minimum of one year of service on the commission. If no upperclassmen indicated desire to attend, sophomores with a minimum of one year of service will then be eligible. Finally, the bylaws had not been updated since May of 2013, so various amendments were recommended throughout the document for consistency and clarity purposes. All changes were reviewed by the city attorney’s office, and Youth Commission reviewed the proposed changes during their August 28, 2019 council meeting, and unanimously approved the changes at the following meeting on September 25. The Youth Commission is exceptionally grateful for the ongoing support of council. Tonight, our Chair Gabby Burton and Vice Chair Madison C. will provide some brief comments in regards to the upcoming trip to Washington, DC for the NLC Conference. As the Chair and Co-Chair, both will be representing the commission on the upcoming trip.
Good evening, and as Mr. Ryder already said, I’m Gabby Burton, the Chair of the Goodyear Youth Commission.
And I’m Madison C., the Vice Chair of the Youth Commission.
The opportunity of a lifetime is what the Goodyear City Council has given to Madison, myself, and the other two youth commissioners from the Goodyear City Council. All of us are so passionate about advocacy, that we’re all just so excited to be able to connect with other youth delegates across the nation, along with other major political figures that could be there.
We’re also very excited to build upon our projects and network with other students our age, and we’re hoping to bring a lot of that back to the City of Goodyear, so we can implement new service projects.
We’re extremely grateful to be able to experience such...
Finally, the bylaws had not been updated since May of two thousand and thirteen, so various amendments were recommended throughout the document for consistency and clarity purposes. All changes were reviewed by the City Attorney's Office and Youth Commission reviewed the proposed changes during their August twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen council meeting and unanimously approved the changes at the following meeting on September twenty-fifth. The Youth Commission is exceptionally grateful for the ongoing support of council. Tonight, our Chair Gabby Burton and Vice Chair Madison C. will provide some brief comments in regards to the upcoming trip to Washington DC for the NLC Conference. As the Chair and Co-Chair, both will be representing the commission on the upcoming trip.
And as Mr. Ryder already said, I'm Gabby Burton, the Chair of the Goodyear Youth Commission.
And I'm Madison C., the Vice Chair of the Youth Commission.
The opportunity of a lifetime is what the Goodyear City Council has given to Madison, myself, and the other two youth commissioners from the Goodyear City Council. All of us are so passionate about advocacy that we're all just so excited to be able to connect with other youth delegates across the nation, along with other major political figures that could be there.
We're also very excited to build upon our projects and network with other students our age, and we're hoping to bring a lot of that back to the city of Goodyear so we can implement new service projects.
We're, we're extremely grateful to be able to experience such a rich part of history. I mean, Washington DC, it's the capital. And for, for some of them, like Serena, I know she's never been to Washington DC, so she'll be extremely excited to be able to experience that, see the museums and other parts of it.
We're also very excited to have the opportunity to meet higher political figures with expertise and possibly even toward the White House as that really connects with a lot of personal goals that many of us have.
And another big part of this is that this is something that we all just, we idolize in a sense, like the people that work within Washington DC, all these parts of politics. And a, a big part of this is going to be shaping our futures. And so we're just extremely grateful to be able to have that opportunity.
Um, I personally want to say thank you for the opportunity, especially being because I come from a lower income household. This is something that my family never would have been able to afford. And, um, as I've been in the Goodyear Youth Commission, I've really gotten the opportunity to amplify my voice that I would have never otherwise received. So thank you so much.
And I'm extremely thankful and grateful to have a city that leads and that constantly looks to innovate and definitely strives to better not only the youth, but everyone here, because so many of the other West Valley cities are unable to go on this trip or have the opportunity. But you guys not only provided just for one person, but four people to be able to go to Washington DC and come back with all these ideas for the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm very fortunate to work with such outstanding youth. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Don. Can I have a motion a second to approve the amendments to the Goodyear Youth Commission bylaws? Do I hear a motion?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Keno and a second by Councilman Lortano. Open for council discussion. Councilman Lortano?
I want to, I am just so impressed with your enthusiasm. And I'm so glad we were able to do this, not just for you guys, but as this continues and to grow our youth commission, because I think it's a wonderful experience to go back there. And you do learn a lot. When you talk to people from, you know, other cities, maybe smaller cities or larger cities, you're like, oh, what did you do? And, and you can see the products they do and it's very exciting to see what they do. So I am excited to hear what you guys learn, what you guys find is a good fit for Goodyear and the ideas you bring back. So great job and keep up the good work for our city. Thank you. You're our future.
Councilman Campbell?
Well, Madison and Debbie, this is going to be an exciting time of your life. I go to NLC every year to the Congressional Conference as well as the annual City Summit. And I can assure you, you're going to meet some of the most outstanding young men and women in the United States at the NLC. They have their own agenda for you youth and you have your own speakers and it's an amazing program, but you all do, and they, they do take you on tours, so don't worry. They want you to experience the whole gamage of Washington DC, not only what NLC does, but what we do as, as a whole nation and, and how the legislature really works. I sit on several NLC committees and we encourage the youth sometimes to even come to our committee meetings to hear what we're talking about, because there are issues that actually impact everyday citizens' lives. Transportation, public safety, human services, you name it, we talk about it. And it's a wonderful opportunity for you and we're so excited that you're going to be able to join us. And John, thank you so much for bringing these forward. I know we had video conversation about their bylaws and how we'd like to get them up to date for them, but thank you so much and thank you for all you do for them.
And Councilman Campbell, thank you for all your involvement in that. We greatly appreciate it. Councilman Keno?
Well, I wanted to say I, I appreciate how much you appreciate and recognize that this is a great opportunity and a responsibility as you go forward and represent our city. But you're both so articulate and earnest as well as the, I'm sure, the other members who are going. And as you interact with others, I am quite confident that other youth are to be blessed by the opportunity to meet you and hear what you're doing. I love the service projects that you guys do. You do a lot and a, and a variety. You're very creative. I am interested in what you're doing, maybe to rally youth or to take what you've learned and, and engage the youth in our, in our community as well. So I know you've got lots of ideas. Look forward to hearing more about them.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I'm also very excited for you. I remember the last couple of years that I've gone as a newer council member, seeing the other youth commissions there, and I thought myself, why isn't Goodyear here? So I was very glad that we were able to get it in our budget and give you guys the opportunity to go. I was a youth that wasn't able to afford it when I was a, when I was in junior high and National Art Society and things like that. So I think it'll be a great experience for you guys to be able to go and see the, see the sites and be able to experience Washington DC and also interact with those other youth commissions out there and learn best practices and apply them to here at Goodyear as well. So very excited to see you guys there and I think it'll be a great time and a great opportunity that will really help define and, and shape and, and encourage you guys as long as you, as you keep going through life. So, thank you.
Well, I know how you feel, Gabby and Madison, because when I was twelve years old, I attended a convention for the first time with my mother and several after that in a trip to Washington DC at the White House. And I can tell you, I know exactly how you're feeling. First of all, it's all a new subject, you know, even though you hear it on now on TV and on radio, but it's not that meaningful till you're actually in a room and experiencing it. So I'm, I'm really glad that we're able to give you this opportunity and many more after that, I hope. And I hope that it makes you more positive about government, especially local government. So, John, good job. Okay, discussion is finished. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you so much and we look forward to seeing you. The next item on business is to consider adopting Resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty eleven to establish the Citizen Rate Review Committee. Javier Sertovich, Public Works Director, presenting. Javier?
So excited.
Oh, no, somebody else? Did I get that wrong or did he get it wrong? You're right.
I was actually going to step back and I'm sure the chief can handle this one. So thank you, Mayor and Council. We're here in front of you this evening to request your support for the establishment of a, an ad hoc rate review committee. Currently, we are in a five-year rate plan for water and wastewater rates that are supporting both the operations as well as infrastructure improvements for both of those utilities. I'm happy to say that coincidentally, earlier today in the consent agenda, you approved expenditure for well twenty-six, which is actually the last project in our five-year plan. So we are, we completed all of the projects associated with this rate plan. So the previous process included the formation of a citizens committee and it was very successful. We plan to go ahead and follow that same strategy this next time. We're not only going to be looking at water and wastewater, but we'll add solid waste rates as well as part of the review. And also, the city has gotten to a point where the stormwater system has grown to a point where we see it as necessary to centralize both the maintenance and improvements and operations of that system. And we're going to be discussing strategies for funding the centralization of, of those functions. We're currently doing a cost of service study and we'll be bringing that information to council for discussion. Currently, finance and public works are working on a rate study, which is underway. And we, our goal is to be in front of council before December of two thousand and twenty, which is when the current plan expires. So we need a, the bottom line is that we need a, an advisory group to help us review and comment on our operational and capital strategies and how those strategies impact rates. Also to develop a clear understanding on how rates support the plan and finally to endorse our plan and endorse the rates that are attached to that plan as well. If given, if given the green light this evening, staff plans to move forward the recruitment of the advisory body to be composed of several types of stakeholders, which will include citizens, representatives from the business community, and other stakeholders like developers. Our recruitment process will include us using the several tools that we have available, like our website, social media, reaching out to engage citizens and also using our neighborhood groups to perhaps tap into other citizens that might want to participate in this. So we plan to assemble that committee in early January and come back to, to council for final appointment of its members. And we'll be meeting soon after that. So with that, we asked Mayor and Council to adopt a resolution that establishes the rate review committee and to adopt the bylaws for that committee.
Thank you, Javier. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to see? Will the city clerk please read Resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty eleven by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty eleven, establishing the Citizen Rate Review Committee, providing for the termination of the Citizen Rate Review Committee, establishing bylaws, authorizing the city manager and or appropriate staff to take all actions necessary to carry out the intent of the resolution and establishing an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty eleven? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Stip and a, and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. I'll start down here. Councilman Campbell?
How large is the committee going to be?
Um, we are planning to have no more than eleven members.
Okay. And is this to look at rates for sewer or water and sewer or either or?
Essentially, what the committee is going to help us do is validate our strategies related to the operations and maintenance of water, sewer, sanitation or solid waste services, and then stormwater as well. If those, if those strategies are approved, essentially the rate is an outcome of those strategies.
Okay, and so since it's going to be for both sewer and for water?
Water, sewer, solid waste, and storm.
Right, then I would assume that we will have residents north and south.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Campbell, Pizzillo?
So this is going to eventually impact the rates, I would assume, because you're looking at capital improvement projects as well, correct?
Correct. This is going to be looking at operations and necessary improvements.
There, there's one area that I would like them to look at and provide feedback on is the seven point five million dollars of debt service that's being paid by the property tax for that water improvement. I would like the committee to look at that and make a recommendation of whether it should be continued, be paid by property tax, or whether it should be included in the rate.
Can you just clarify that a little bit? Are you talking about the north versus the south?
Yes.
Thank you.
Point taken.
Councilman Keno?
Well, I know that these are always kind of be tricky things, but I, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that you are going to go through to get a Citizen Rate Review Committee. Where many of us live, we don't get to have direct impact or input into our water and wastewater treatment, so this is definitely the way to go. So I appreciate it that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Sti, Vice, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Wherever you are.
I was looking at.
Yeah, you were looking at, yeah.
I demoted you for a moment. I pushed you back up there, though.
Mom's still named me Bill. It doesn't matter. Um, I, I, I have to respectfully disagree with Councilmember Pizzillo and I think it should be a decision of the council whether we have them look at that or not. The council made the decision to put the four, the seven point five million on, to the entire city. That's a council decision. If the council wishes to have the committee look at it, then I think the council should do that, but I don't think the committee should just do that on their own or at the request of a single council member.
Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo what our Bill said. I think it's a great idea to have, create the citizens committee and look at the rates. So looking forward to the results of it and, yeah, looking forward to see where we go from here, because water is going to continually be an issue over the many, many years for us. So I'm glad that we're putting a committee together. So thank you.
Councilmember Lortano?
I, I would like to keep it focused on the rates specifically, because I think that's going to be more important. And then once we see what the rates are, that's another issue that council wants to open up, as what Councilmember Pizzillo said, I think that that's a good conversation once we see what the rate study comes back at. But I think that would be a part two, perhaps.
I'm going to give Councilman Pizzillo a chance to talk here and one response.
I respectfully disagree with the Vice Mayor. I think that if you're going to have a committee look at all costs associated, since people north of ten, I realize it was a council decision to charge those north of ten for services that they, in my opinion, are not getting the cost of the city's water. But the same token, we can just as soon exclude that, but I'd love to know what that cost would be on the rates of that seven point five, because a while back, many years ago, our goal was to ensure that the north did not subsidize the south in these pieces. So I think there's no harm in asking for that. There's no harm in seeing what the cost is and if council decides they want to continue to charge those north for that, then that's fine.
And I'm last. I don't consider that charging those. Yes, they have a different rate, but we are one city. And we overlap on many things, it, from different neighborhoods and the cost is somewhat different. And I, so I am, I'm, I was here for that vote and, and so if it brought back to us, I think it, we'd have to do, you know, another work session on it. And, but I think you need the consensus of the council, whether or not they want to do that. But I have to agree with our Vice Mayor on that one. So first of all, I just want to tell you, our committees have worked so well. And I'm sure some of the people that were on the rate committee and that were on the other committees are going to be like, I want to be on it. It is such a good way to do it and we have such positive results. So I'm, I'm looking forward to this. We're at a different time. We have, we have construction going on in the water section, the department and all that. So I appreciate, I appreciate the team you're going to put together. So thank you. All right, so I lost my place because I always talk too much. So I'm out for, up for a vote, right? All right. Open for a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Six forty-eight, and our last business is to consider approving the construction budget transfer and an expenditure, expenditure for the RWC regal system simulcast site. Our presenters are San Diego Rodriguez, Acting Chief of Police, and it is your time to be up there this time, and Troy Tavasan, Senior Project Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I want to talk to you about the Regional Wireless Cooperative Radio System Simulcast Site, otherwise known as the RWC. So I'll begin with a little bit of background and how that, the RWC is used throughout the valley. So across the Phoenix metropolitan region, police, fire, EMS, and other municipal services utilize the radio system called the RWC, the, the Regional Wireless Cooperative. The city has been a partner of the RWC since two thousand and eight. Both our police and fire departments use it now to communicate back and forth along with in-between regular calls for service and then emergency calls for service. So it's our primary way of, of talking amongst each other. So being a partner of the RWC allows us to access additional resources as needed if there's an immediate tactical situation that's going on or if there's also a planned event. So it gives us channels that we can go to that are secure so we can deal with planned events. It is on all our police radios, inside our cars, inside our fire trucks, and also the radios that we carry on our body, go through the system. So the system is important also because there is something called PSAP in every telecommunications system in the nine-one-one world, and that allows agencies to talk back and forth amongst each other immediately without having to call another dispatch center or anything like that. So whenever there's a major incident, an example of that is when Trooper Edenhofer, Edenhofer was shot up on I-ten, we had officers there from Goodyear within a minute already helping take the suspect into custody. And that wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to do that without that communication. So tonight, the RWC radio site project that we'll be speaking about is located here in the city of Goodyear at our telecommunications center, and it is within the existing five-year CIP program that we have now. A photo of the RWC site is... CIP program that we have now. A photo of the RWC site is, is on the teleprompter there. So, that's our telecommunications building, where the, the actual construction and where the equipment would be installed is that big mast that you see behind the building there, which is the large antenna out in the parking lot here. That's where it all would be constructed, just to give you a point of view. So, talk a little bit about our current approved project timeline. It is currently in our fiscal year funds, both in FY 20 and 21 approved. So, right now, we have about $900,000 approved for both design and also for equipment. And then, in FY 21, it's approved to have just over $3 million there approved for the construction and the implementation of the equipment and so forth, with a total of about $4 million. So, our proposed project timeline would be to advance all the FY 21 funds of just over $3 million to the current fiscal year now, and be able to use those funds to run the design, the equipment purchase, and the construction all at once. And with, by doing this, the overall project timeline would be shortened by nine months, which would get the system up and running of a completion date around September 2020, October 2020. So, with the project completed, it will allow our Goodyear Public Safety improved radio coverage throughout the city while responding to our calls for service. So, our staff analysis and meeting with the project team along with Motorola Solutions, we feel that there's enough resources and the availability of both internal and external staff to complete the project with no issues. In addition, this would allow us to maximize any warranty period on new equipment as it would be installed at the same time it was purchased. Continuing on, by combining the design, equipment purchases, and construction at the same time, it would reduce overall project costs not to exceed $2 million. This would allow a project savings of about, approximately $2 million back into the city. This also includes contingency funds, should they be needed, but we don't suspect that we'll need any of those contingency funds. Ultimately, this is a win-win situation involving all our stakeholders. So, and working together with Motorola Solutions, them providing incentives by doing this, and the reuse of some equipment has cut the broad, the, the project in half. So, what we're asking tonight, or our recommendation, is that you approve the budget transfer of $3,250,000, allowing for the expenditure up to $2 million, or no more than $2 million, and the authority to finish the construction all at once, along with the purchasing of the equipment in FY 20. So, with that, I also have Troy Tobiason here, Senior Project Manager for the City of Goodyear, and I also have Motorola Project Manager Nick Spino here also, if there's any questions that you have for them.
Did you want them to make any comments, or just stand for questions?
I would offer it to them if they would like to make any comments.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. And thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then I need a motion in a second to approve the construction budget transfer of $3,250,000, expenditure of $2 million for fees and costs associated with the completion of the RWC simulcast site. Do I hear a motion?
No move.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Vice Mayor Stiff. Open for council discussion. Councilman Loretano?
First of all, thank you. I think this is a great step forward as we grow to continue. We need to make sure that we keep the, on the top of all communication. I have a question. This may not even be related, but you hear a lot about 5G. Is that something in the future that will go to this system or help this system, or is it totally unrelated? I just hear how great it is.
It would be totally unrelated at this time. This would be just the two-way radio transmissions and so forth.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Campbell?
Chief, didn't we know this was coming? We've been talking about this for years, have we not?
About the RWC and the implementation?
Right.
Yes. So, there's about nineteen members in the RWC. Like I say, it makes up from different parts of public safety throughout the valley, and it's being used every day. So, the good thing is, is that, once it's up and in place, the RWC takes over any maintenance that needs to happen, things of that nature, so.
Well, it'll certainly improve our communications capability, and it's important to the city that we do that.
Absolutely. I feel that it's gonna improve the quality of life, not only for us, but also for the cities around us that would, that we would respond to and help.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman, you know?
I'm curious just how, you know, with technology changing and things like this, will this be anticipated to serve us well for an extended period of time?
Absolutely. So, it'll also put a redundancy out there for us, so that we would be able to share that with other cities, and they would be able to share their redundancy with us if we're on the edge of a city or things to that nature. So, plus, a site of this location will help us service the northern part of, of our city and the other cities to the north, so.
So, are we currently operating on somebody else's system, or is that?
We are. We're, we're operating on a system that's down in Cassin, that the RWC or the Phoenix is looking at possibly dismantling. So, I do know that there are other cities around us that are planning on adding other sites that we would have that additional redundancy.
Great, thank you.
Any other comment?
I just wanna say, sounds good to me, safety and service. It's all in the name of the citizens, so. All right, we've had discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, six fifty-seven. How about that? Hmm? All right, does council have any comments or, or combination, activities you wanna talk about? So, Councilman Pizzillo?
Question on the road, I guess I'm trying to picture, on the east side of Estrella.
Okay, you're gonna ask for, all right.
Yeah.
So, you're doing both. Okay, all right.
South of 10, east side of Estrella Parkway, there's a very short strip of road where the road goes from three lanes to two lanes. And my biggest concern is that's an accident just waiting for a place to happen. I don't know who's responsible for that.
The tires that are sitting there?
No, small sliver where it gets onto I-10, heading, heading north. It's a very small sliver where it goes from three lanes to two lanes. And I don't know who's responsible or whether we can do that, but I see that all the time coming up there where they're trying to squeeze in from that right lane over, and I think it's kind of a danger, a dangerous, kind of pull-in to try to get up on I-10 heading north. So, or I mean, heading east. So, if somebody, if you can give me feedback on that, what it would take probably to do that, or if there's, who's responsible for that piece?
Yes, thank you. Look into it and get some information back for council. Would appreciate, 'cause I, I think that's really a dangerous section here of the road. The other thing I just wanna mention real quickly is that the Goodyear Glows, I'm not gonna be able to attend. Say hi to Santa for me, Nathan. My, my granddaughter is in a Christmas, Christmas concert at Higley Center for the Performing Arts that day, same time. So, if you would just pass on the words of Santa, I'm sorry, I'm gonna miss that event, but I gotta cover the granddaughter's event, so.
Next. Wally?
Well, I'm just gonna make it short, 'cause I wanna hurry up and get us out of here like everybody else is trying to get out. But I attended the National League of Cities Conference in San Antonio. Not last week, I guess it was the week before last. I can't remember now. But anyway, it was a wonderful conference, and I had the opportunity to visit the Park and, San Antonio Park and Recreation Department, took me under their wing, and took me to Pierso Park where I saw a NNGE playground, a NNGE playground that you and your kids would love. And we got to play on it, and it was really wonderful, and I really appreciated their hospitality. They showed me things in Park and Rec that I had been aware of, but had never seen, and it was wonderful. The National League has been an amazing experience. I was elected first vice president of the Women in Municipal Government, which means Goodyear will be hosting the Women in Municipal Government in night, in 2020, I think. Isn't it, Julie? Yeah, 2020, or 21. I can't remember. I've got a year to plan it, and it's going to be a lot of fun, and the women are excited to come to Goodyear. We get to show off our city, and, and really, we're a force, so. And on top of that, there's a couple of other announcements out of NLC that will be coming, I hope, this week or next week, and then we can talk about it then. So, thanks.
Thank you, Wally. Next?
This morning, I attended the groundbreaking in Avondale for the Care First and Senior Center, and it was a great event honoring Mayor Marie Rogers, a lot of accolades for her service and to the region. And so, it's, it's an important social services partner for all of us, and it's exciting that it's going to be a beautiful campus there.
I, I saw that on Twitter, and I sent a little note back to them, because I thought that was a great honor for her. She worked very hard. Well, Wally, we wanna say a second. I know you announced it, but your recent appointment in 2020 as the Chair of the Nations League City Military Communities Council, and a military wife telling another military wife, "Great job. You're gonna be able to do well," and so we're so, we're happy of it. And you've worked to be elected the vice president. You have done a great job, and I appreciate it. Sherry Loretano? Sherry, you were appointed as the co-chair of the NLC Public Safety and Crime Prevention Advocacy Committee, our lawyer. Are you gonna be effective on that?
We're debating that right now.
But we, but we, we want stories. So, just keep track of the stories. Is there, okay, so now, the city manager is going to talk about this, but I need my intergov to come forward, please, at the podium, Rob Boar. Rob is going to be leaving this city very soon, December, Friday, December 13th, and it's on a Friday 13th. I don't know. Doesn't have the right vibes. But I just want you to know, as a mayor, he's been with me quite a long time, and he's been so dependable. We have a great friendship. We have a great discussion time together. It's really hard to find people that you really identify with, and we spend a lot of time together. He takes ribbing, 'cause the mayor is always making fun, maybe his driving, maybe things like that, you know. But you've done a great job for the city, and we've had some real issues with the legislature, and you were on top of it. We greatly appreciate that. I'm not gonna say anymore, because the city manager's turn, and she's gonna talk about you, Rob.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Rob's last council meeting with us, and he did not know we were gonna do this, so that's why you were red as you were walking up already. So, but Rob has served with the City of Goodyear for about seven and a half years, and he's gonna be taking the next step in his career. And so, we are super happy for him, but it is bittersweet for us. Appreciate all of your thoughtful guidance and, and all of the work and dedication that you give to the City of Goodyear. So, thank you very much for your service, and you will be missed.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say?
I appreciate the recognition. I appreciate very much, Mayor. It was great working with you. It's been seven, like Julie said, it's been seven and a half years, but being able to build relationships with, with all of you, and you guys have been great leaders for the city, and all the exciting things that are, that are happening here that we hear about everywhere we go. Everybody's noticing it, and that has so much to do with, with each of you, and I'm honored to be able to, to have built that relationship with each of you. And all the relationships are built with, built with others in the city, both former employees and current employees that'll last forever. And Julie's been a great leader and a great boss, and you guys did a, did a great job there with, with appointing a new city manager. And even though I'm moving to a different city, we kinda work in the same world with local government, so I know I'll get to see you guys at all kinds of regional stuff and, and conferences and things like that. So, I look forward to always seeing you, and I'll always be watching for Goodyear and excited about the thing happening here.
Thank you very much. City Manager, you have a report to give?
I just have a couple of items, Mayor. The first is, I wanted to thank everyone who participated in the Goodyear Retail Survey. We did have more than 2,600 responses, and we look forward to getting that all summarized and back out to the community with all that great information. As was mentioned, we have the Goodyear Ballpark hosting Goodyear Glows this Saturday, and this is the event formerly known as Home Plate for the Holidays. The gates will open at 4:00 PM. Admission, parking, and all activities are free, so we welcome our community to come out, see Santa Claus arrive with a photo opportunity, our annual Goodyear tree lighting, and I hear it's a beautiful new tree. And there's going to be 40 tons of snow. So, if there's not a reason to come out there, I don't know what is. So, I look forward to, to having another great event here in Goodyear. And that's it.
Good. Thank you very much. All right, the next meeting will be a regular meeting on December 16th at 6:00 PM. No further business. This meeting is adjourned.